I'd like to call this village board meeting to order. This is number 3,073. It's April 28, 2014. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Meyer.
Here.
Abernathy.
Present.
Semple.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Kim.
Here.
Could everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance is required by the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a very full agenda this evening. I don't know if you got a chance to look at the packet. Just want to give an introduction before we get going. It's just, it's packed. We're talking about several things which are time-sensitive that we would normally perhaps put off just to absorb it all in one meeting, but we have an economic incentive with Medline we'll talk about, the budget, branding, water rates, Oak Creek Plaza where Menards used to be, and then collective bargaining agreement. And that's all in one evening. So, so here we go. Right now, let's do approval of minutes. I need a motion to pass the Finance Committee meeting minutes from April 7.
No moves.
Second.
Motion by Kim.
This is Sullivan, Meyer, and Abernathy.
Ah.
Finance Committee.
Make the motion.
I'll second still.
Motion by Sullivan, second by Abernathy. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
It passes. Next, we need a motion to pass the village board meeting minutes from April 7, 2014.
No moved.
Motion by Voss, second by Kim. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Voss.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Motion carries. This brings us to the part of the evening where we have a public commentary. Would anyone from the audience wish to address the board at this time? Go ahead and, we'll start over here. Come on up. Could you just give your name first?
Good evening. My name is Joseph Schwan, Joe Schwan, 28, 630, Champions Court. Good evening. I'd like to find out more information on what's happening with the Dominics. I go to Great Clips to get my hair cut and the rumors sort of stopped. So, what is the latest of what's happening with the center there? Anybody interested or?
Um, well, I mean, I'll give the information I have if you want to follow up. We've been talking to several different, you know, shopping companies, you know, grocery companies, and, you know, some of them have expressed interest, others have taken a pass, obviously. One of the complications is that the holding company for Jewel purchased the holding company for Dominics.
Right.
Okay?
Serbia's.
And that kind of throws a wrench in the spokes in terms of the grocery store industry kind of coming to a halt, you know, in terms of movement and everything. So, I know Mr. Barrera is in contact with a number of firms, but, you know, the level to those discussions, you know, you know, some of it, you know, these grocery firms are, they like to hold their cards close to the vest and don't give up a whole lot of information. If you want to, you know, continue, that'd be fine.
Yeah, I think that's true. I think it's been somewhat frustrating because of the acquisition, and I know that there's still a few years left on the lease that Dominics has at that shopping center, and we think that lease rate was pretty high, higher than what somebody's willing to pay today, so there might be a little motivation problem with the property owner because of that, and, but I know that we personally reached out to 10 to 15 different groceries and staying in touch with them, seeing if there's any interest.
Another thing, at the shopping center there, over the winter, like everywhere else, it took a lot of damage. There's trees that are damaged there and everything else, and I think Pete should take a look at it. But my concern is, now that there's not a lot of tenants, with Dominics out of there, there's not a lot of cars there, will the landowner keep the property up and do the spring cleaning like they do? They used to do a good job every year. They go in there and put down new mulch, make sure the trees were okay, the bushes are okay, and I sort of get the feeling that nothing, nothing's happening and spring is here. So, I just wonder if the village would take a look at that to make sure so we attract people to go into the center and not look like it's desolate.
I, I think we'll definitely keep an eye on that. Now, this is a firm that, I think, you know, they own hundreds of other shopping centers just like this one, so, you know, corporate and they have what we would assume would be high standards, but we'll definitely, you know, keep an eye on that. And while we're on that topic, you know, we've, I know some trustees and myself, we've been in there, talked to, you know, some of the smaller businesses, and, you know, we're very much attuned to what's going on there, and, you know, we're, you know, doing everything we can, and as I've, you know, stated elsewhere, you know, if, if no one moves into that spot, it isn't going to be because of anything we did or didn't do. We are all ears and ready to talk to anyone that is expressing interest there.
And the last question is, in the intersection of 176-6083, every once in a while, I see a surveying crew come out there and put a few stakes down, red flag, and then, then you don't see anybody for a couple of weeks. Do we have a timeline or anything that's when it's going to get started or?
The latest timeline?
Yes.
The latest timeline is this fall.
Well, now we're pushing it to fall.
Yeah, right. We're close. We've got a little bit more land acquisition to do at that triangle, and got to amend an agreement with the IDOT, but they verbally said it's okay, and so we're targeting this fall for starting that project. There's a lot of utility work that has to occur.
Okay. Thank you very much for the update.
Thank you. Think we had someone else? Public commentary continuing. Anyone else want to address the board? Okay. Okay, we'll close the floor. Move on to presentations and awards. I have a proclamation to read regarding Vicki Dorjev, the winner of the 2014 Central Region Smart Telecommunicator Award, and Ms. Dorjev was the dispatch operator who took the call related to the tragic incident with the child abduction, and really was the point of contact with, you know, the mother in a situation I think is every parent's worst nightmare. She was the one right there and just did a heroic job, you know, in handling that situation. And so I'm going to read the proclamation, and then I want Chief Gunther to, and he'll give a few more remarks, and we'll have Ms. Dorjev come on up after that. All right. Whereas on September 30, 2013, Mundaline Police Department dispatcher Vicki Dorjev received a 911 call from a Spanish-speaking caller who reported that her three-year-old daughter had been kidnapped. And whereas Ms. Dorjev calmed the caller, obtained a description of the vehicle and a partial license plate number, then by running this information through the department's traffic ticket records, was able to generate a list of possible vehicle matches which eventually led to the apprehension of the offender. And whereas Ms. Dorjev handled this stressful, emotional, and life-threatening incident with great professionalism, technical skill, and sensitivity. And whereas because she went above and beyond the call of duty, Vicki Dorjev was selected by 911 call-takers and dispatchers from across the country to receive the 2014 Smart Telecommunicator Award. And whereas Vicki Dorjev was chosen as the 2014 Central U.S. Regional Smart Telecommunicator winner for outstanding dedication to her job and successfully resolving a serious public emergency. Now therefore be proclaimed by the mayor and Board of Trustees of the Village of Mundaline, Illinois that Vicki Dorjev be commended for her actions on September 30, 2013. Thanked for excellent service to our community and congratulated upon being selected as the 2014 U.S. Central Regional winner of the Smart Telecommunicator Award. Proclaimed, signed, and sealed this 28th day of April, 2014, in the Village of Mundaline, Lake County, Illinois. So, Chief, you can, uh...
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, I should come on up. A couple of things that are interesting about this award to kind of put it in perspective for everybody is several hundred nominations were taken throughout the country, and it was broken down into five regions, and Vicki was selected as the winner of the central region, which is from Texas to the Dakotas, from Colorado to the eastern seaboard. And she was selected as the winner within that region of nominations. And to further kind of put it in perspective for you, last year's national winner happened to be the, one of the primary telecommunicators on the tragedy at Sandy Hook. So, this is an award that's a very big honor for Vicki to have received, and we're very proud of her, and I would, I would say we're very proud of her because this is indicative of her daily activity and her daily routine, and kind of what we expect from all of our dispatchers, but she handles every call that she takes in this manner. And, you know, she just went above and beyond what's expected when you think about, she handled all this stressful information flowing in from all these different callers, and she deciphered it and got it out to the officers so that the officers could handle and do what they needed to do, but then she took it a step further and didn't drop it where she would be expected by her normal job description to have been done with that particular call for service. She started to think about ways that she could help out and was able to take the information she'd gathered, look at some internal databases for license plate information and vehicle description, and what she was able to obtain from the dispatch center later proved to correlate with what the investigators had determined at the scene of the crime and ultimately gave us an excellent lead that led within 48 hours to the apprehension of the offender in this case. So, I think it goes without saying, congratulations to Vicki in everything that she did. So, thank you. This is the award that Vicki got actually from Smart 911. So, this is hers, and we have another one that we purchased that we're going to put up in the lobby so everybody remembers, and that's the mayor's. Joe, your husband's here. Joe, your husband is here. Joe, you got some pictures you want to take?
This is an update on the Village of Mundaline's partnership with Affordable Housing Corporation of Lake County to improve distressed properties, and we have a presentation right now from Lisa Pagliisi, the executive director.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us tonight again. My name's Lisa Pagliisi. I'm the executive director at Affordable Housing Corporation, or AHC, and with me is Michael Mater, our Director of Construction Services, and I wanted to take a minute to, first off, just thank you for your willingness and your vision to create this partnership, give you an update on how we got here, what we've accomplished, and where we're going to be going over the next couple of years, and I would be most remiss if I did not say a personal thank you to Mike Flynn for all he has done to really make this happen. So, thank you, Mike. Before I get started, I want to tell you just a little bit about AHC because you very well may have constituents, neighbors, or friends who could make use of our services, or a not-for-profit 501(c)(3). We've been around since 1995, and our mission is to increase and preserve affordable housing, and we do that in three ways. One is that we rehab distressed properties, people who own their own home and foreclosed and vacant properties. We rehab them, put a homeowner in there, and get them working for the neighborhood again. We have homebuyer programs to help people maintain sustainable, responsible homeownership, education, counseling, and forgivable grants for, for down payment as well as improving your home, and we help people save their home from foreclosure. We have classes we offer on a weekly basis, many of which are right here in Mundaline. We intervene with homeowners. We intervene on their behalf with their lender to help them get a loan modification or what we call a graceful exit, and we work with the courts to help homeowners prepare for mediation. So, if you know people looking to buy a home, improve a home, save their home from foreclosure, have them give us a call. So, this partnership started a couple of years ago when Mike Flynn called about a really unusual situation about the home at 239 North Lincoln that was in foreclosure and built over a sewer line, and, long story short, once the home went into foreclosure, we created an agreement with the village, AHC, and Libertyville Bank and Trust to essentially donate the home to AHC, and we put about $102,000 into that home to cap off that sewer line, rebuild the foundation, and make a number of improvements. So, that's where things started, and right about that same time, there was some federal dollars available called the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, or NSP, which we were awarded to acquire foreclosed and vacant properties, rehab them, and resell them to lower moderate-income households. And to give you a frame of reference, moderate income for a family of four is about $90,000. So, I'm going to pause there and take a minute to say what we mean by rehab and resell. We are not flippers when we go into a property. Mike, Mater goes in and does top-to-bottom inspection, and we improve all major systems and structures, electric, plumbing, HVAC, roof to the floor to the foundation. We do all of that in addition to co-compliance. So, when somebody moves in there, no work should really be needed for several years. When we resell the home, the buyer participates in education and counseling. They have to conform to certain underwriting standards, so we make sure, we do everything we can to make sure that home doesn't end up in foreclosure again. So, we were awarded those NSP dollars to do that, and one of the caveats was that the money be used in areas that had high rates of both foreclosure and subprime mortgages. And there were some areas in Mundaline that met that criteria, so we started working here, and to date, we have rehabbed and resold 20 homes. We've got another five in the works, and I gave to both the mayor and Mike Flynn a map of where those properties are located. You'll see they're fairly concentrated, so, you know, there's neighborhoods with lots of foreclosures that rather than just, you know, going down that path, we were able to intervene early on and make a difference. Somewhere throughout that, Mike had come to us and said, you know, this is great, but can you do some homes in other areas besides those NSP restricted areas? And he helped make that happen by working with all of you to create an agreement that would essentially give us something akin to a line of credit, like about $100,000 that we could go and buy homes outside of those areas, leverage the funds to rehab them and make those improvements. And because we had that agreement with you, we were able to leverage dollars through the Attorney General Office to rehab another 36 homes in Mundaline. So, we'll be signing the contract for that, we hope, within a couple of months, and over the next three years, we'll be doing about 12 homes a year in Mundaline, taking, again, vacant and foreclosed homes, rehabbing them, reselling them to buyers who are having, who receive that comprehensive education and counseling. We never would have gotten that grant were it not for the innovation of that agreement with you. So, we're really excited to continue on and look forward to coming back again to provide you with another update.
One more thing, Lisa, we, you also are about to use that purchase.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to mention that. Yes, the first home is scheduled actually to close on May 23 at 221 West Holly, so that'll be going.
That's our revolving loan agreement with AHC, and that home's on Holly Street.
Yeah, 221 West Holly, so again, May 23. That's the scheduled closing date.
Thanks.
We greatly value our relationship with you. Thank you for the work you do.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to public hearings. There are none this evening, taking this to the mayor's report. We have a number of items here, and first, we have commission appointments. This is Exhibit 3, and we'd need a motion to approve Vern Lappi as the new member of the Mundaline Community Days Commission.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Voss, second by Sullivan. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Voss.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Lappi, would you want to come up and sworn in?
Where do you want me?
Right here.
Right there. Close the mic.
Yes.
Yes. Please raise your right hand. I, Vern Lappi. I, Vern Lappi. Do so in the square of your palm. That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And then I will faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of Mundaline Community Days Commission Member.
The duties of the Mundaline Days Commission, Community Commission?
Member.
Member.
According to the best of my votes.
According to the best of my votes. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
She's going to shake his balls. So, does this email see you mentioned already?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you, ladies. And thank you. Thank you. Quit smiling.
Okay, next, we have the item for the Human Relations Commission, Victor Zellner, was going to be approved tonight, but he, upon further reflection and some very good reasons, elected to withdraw his nomination, and so I guess we would need a motion to remove, remove this item from the agenda.
No moves.
Second.
Motion by Abernathy, second by Semple. Discussion. Clerk, or, Mr. Flynn, please call the roll.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Voss.
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to Item B under my report, there's a proclamation naming May 2014 as the Building Safety Month. Building Safety Month, and the proclamation is quite long, and, and it really is a month to reflect on building safety and the use of codes. And in just reflecting on this, just thinking about it, you can't help but just, you know, feel for the folks down in Long Grove at that house explosion, that just the tragic thing that happened, and if you've seen aerials of that, it's just unbelievable. And, you know, when you look at that and you contemplate all the complexities that go into a building, you know, I thank God for building codes, right? I mean, when you see that, and so it's just a month to reflect on that, and when you see new construction, that's what the proclamation is all about, and there's a set of international codes that, that is recognized in that proclamation, so I just wanted to say a few words about that. So, that's that proclamation in Exhibit 4. Next, Item C is a motion to adopt a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an economic incentive agreement with Medline Industries. This is Exhibit 5. I just need that motion. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion by Sullivan, second by Kim. Discussion.
Yes, please, Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Voss.
Um, there were, in reading through this resolution, there were some things that I, I had anticipated seeing that I didn't see, so I'm wondering if perhaps I missed them. The first thing is, I see nothing that requires Medline to channel a certain percentage of their sales through Mundaline. Is there something in here and I'm missing it, or hitting a dollar amount or a percentage of sales?
No, there is no obligation for minimum sales tax running through.
Well, did they, I mean, if you look on their website, they say that they have sales of $5.8 billion. So, do we anticipate $5.8 billion being processed through here?
No, their estimate, if I remember correctly, was 750 million.
Sales tax, so it would be like 35.
Yeah, right, about 35 million. It's a sales tax that is attributable to the Mundaline location.
Well, it's their headquarters, right, Mundaline? So, wouldn't all their...
They're a global company.
Right.
We're talking about the Illinois sales going through Mundaline.
So, well, that's why I'm asking. They are a global company. They could do worldwide sales out of their Mundaline office. I'm wondering, what, are they national sales that come through here? Is it just the state of Illinois?
I believe it's the state.
Yeah, I spoke with the CFO, and he indicated it was the state of Illinois.
And, um, the other thing is, I don't see any tie to this incentive for future growth at Medline, or I thought we were tying this to their future development. I don't see any tie. I just see us giving them money.
Um, no, there is no future tie to growth in Mundaline. Both conversations are going on simultaneously, but as you may be aware, because of the rules change or the ruling from the Illinois Supreme Court, the Department of Revenue has rewritten what they call these emergency rules.
Yes.
And so there is a need on their part to move quickly on this sales tax sharing agreement, and they're probably at least two, maybe three years out on their expansion plan.
And, but we didn't think to put in this agreement that because our experience with Medline is that they're going to want some future tax incentive on future building, that this could be seen as that?
Yeah, yes, we thought about it and discussed that with them, and their preference was to keep it separate.
Well, not surprisingly, because then they can come back to us and ask for more. But I am disappointed that we did not think that we could pursue that and actually link those up together because we did open the door for them to come back for more. So, for people who maybe are in the audience who aren't aware, what Mr. Libeta was talking about in terms of the Supreme Court and the IRS is that Medline had, for the past few years, perhaps, opened a sales office in Kankakee, a satellite office, to avoid paying their taxes up here and to pay at a lower rate, and so now that they are being required to move this office back, they are requesting us to give them a portion of the sales tax that would be due us. And it is my firm belief that this resolution, this agreement, is unacceptable because it does not tie future growth requirements to this, so that we do open the door and allow for Medline to come back and ask for more tax incentives without creating any requirement on their part. We don't have any dollar amounts or requirements, percentage of sales, or anything that we require. I see that this is a 20-year agreement that is automatically renewable, and in order to stop it, it has to be with 12 months' notice. So, it seems to me that we're on quite a big hook of giving Medline money that they would not otherwise be entitled to, mostly because they went for years without paying what they were absolutely required to pay.
That's just not true.
Well, sure it is.
It's not true at all.
Because, well, they, they, we, we missed out on years of sales... They, we missed out on years of sales because they followed a loophole that allowed them to off, open a very small office in Kankakee, simply to avoid paying taxes up here. So it's not that they did anything illegal. The moral question will leave hanging out there. But, so now they've come back to us being required to move their sales office out of Kankakee.
Yes.
And in order for them to bring it to us, they are demanding that we give them a portion of our sales tax. And this is a five-point, this is a company privately held, the 69th largest privately held company in the world, with $5.8 billion in sales, and they are requiring us to give them sales tax that we, in this community, could use to do streets, to hire safety officers, to do all sorts of things, because...
No, let's examine the alternatives. Okay? They don't have to come to Mundaline. They don't have to run their sales through Mundaline. They are very capable of retooling their sales approach so that they could go through another community in this area. They have sales offices all over. It's just, it's easier for them to run it through Mundaline, but the alternative you're suggesting is if we say no to this, they'll say, fine, we're going to retool and we'll work it through an office in Vernon Hills. They'll go to Vernon Hills, or they'll go to Libertyville, or other communities in Illinois, and run their sales through those communities instead. And so this agreement, all right, is going to put Medline in the number-two spot of all the places we get sales tax revenue. They'll be second to target in terms of generating sales tax revenue for us. Now, I'd rather take that and build a relationship with Medline, have that money coming in, and then later on, when they want to talk about expanding and building another building, and we will have that discussion, and that is on the horizon. You know, should they decide to expand here, but, you know, they exploited a loophole. That's true, as did many, many other companies. You know, through that and another city. So, this is a great opportunity, and I think we should definitely do this.
I think it is a great opportunity. I just think that we, as, we're just not capitalizing on everything that we should capitalize for our residents. We're giving them back a full percent. Because we are a home rule community, we get a percent. But for the neighbors that you talked about that aren't home rule, if they gave them a full percent, they'd get nothing. So, I'm pretty sure they wouldn't be giving them a full percent. So, we could have maybe bargained for something less. Or, again, I think we should have tied it to employment or future building, or years, or certain dollar amounts, or, I don't know, how about that they actually participate in stuff going on in Mundaline and do a little bit better job of giving back? I'm not saying that we don't want them here. I'm just saying that I think that we're giving them a bit too much to get them here.
Anyone else? Trustee Sullivan.
In regard to the total revenue of Medline, they're a multi-billion dollar corporation. But the sales of their product that are applicable to this agreement are only those sold in Illinois. As I understand it, the form is an ST1 or an ST2. I filled many of those out. It contains just two sales in Illinois. And I believe the agreement says they will provide us with their sales tax forms in order that we can coordinate and reconcile those with the Department of Revenue information. So we confirm the total amount we've received, and by that, according to the agreement, half of that goes back to Medline. And I agree with the mayor that they can, this is a negotiation, and I wasn't involved in those negotiations. If you were. I think this probably is as good a deal as we can get. We weren't getting a penny before this deal they, that you understand took place with Kankakee. This is somewhat of a windfall, and as a result of the negotiations, I think it's an effective agreement. $5.2 billion, is that what it was?
$5.8 is what they listed on their website.
Those who want to criticize big business are using those numbers. Medline hasn't been criticized for those numbers. Their profit margin is far greater than Walmart, who has also multi billions of dollars of revenue with 3% profit margin. At any rate, nothing wrong with making money. And I'm glad Medline is here, and I'm sure you are too. They are, are they the number-one real estate taxpayer in the village of Mundaline? They're very near the top. We want to keep them here. We want a good relationship with them, and I think this is a good start for us. That type of arrangement. Business-friendly approach to very dear in regard to the corporate system. I have no reservation in supporting this. One question I have is that, does anyone have any ideas in regard to Medline in agreements with vendors, suppliers, where they exchange non-monetary consideration for product, therefore reducing their sales tax?
Yeah.
That would be the fly that I would be looking for in the chair.
Well, it's going through the state. That's the important part.
Yeah.
It's everything that's going to the state.
When their dollar amounts put on their sales tax report.
Right.
Okay. Too much to worry about.
Anyone else? Trustee Meyer.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I've had extensive discussions with Mayor Lentz on this and Mr. Libado on this. And there's a difference in, you know, like, point of sale origination versus destination. In some states, it, the sales tax is based on the purchaser, and some states it's based on the seller. And so you get into those formulas, and we've gone through a lot of different questions that I've had and exhaustively gone through it. Now, we wouldn't get sales tax from every state out of the United States and the world, but I also still believe that we should be getting more than Illinois. But there aren't that many states, I think, what was it, 12? In the email that you sent. I didn't bring it. There are like 12 states where it's the, the sales tax is based on where the seller is located. And it comes into, for example, in California, they have sales reps that take calls and create sales in Ontario. So we would not be entitled to any revenues generated out of there. So you have, it's kind of a strange mix and balance. But I still think we should be getting more than just Illinois, based on some of those other states where the sales tax is based on where the seller is located and the point of sale.
And there is, just in response to that, in my conversations with Mr. Howard, the CFO for Medline, he indicated the same. And I think the one example I used was a kind of a hypothetical scenario where they did not have a presence in one particular state and purchased a product from Medline that was subject to sales tax, and that was here, even though the order may have been taken in a third state. If it came through Mundaline, it would be counted as Mundaline sales tax. So it does get very, very complex, and there are just hundreds and hundreds, if not thousands, of permutations on where the product is made, where the purchase order, if you will, is taken, where it's shipped from, all of these things. And then every state has its own rules on sales tax, and you have to weed through all of that to really figure it out. So, but there are some that are sales that are occurring in other states that are coming through Mundaline and are part of this agreement.
Anyone else? Okay. Please call the roll.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Voss.
No.
Meyer.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Assemble.
Yes.
Motion carries. Very good. All right. Five. Moving on to Item D, Mundaline Community Day, Mundaline Community Connection funding request. This is Exhibit 6. I need a motion to approve a purchase order in payment to Mundaline Community Connection in the amount of $30,000.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Motion by Assemble.
Second.
Second by Abernathy. Discussion?
Yes, please, Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Voss.
The risk of sounding like a broken record, I bring this up every year. They were supposed to become more independent. Our funding of them was not supposed to be forever. This year's request for funding takes into account the additional money that we gave them when they had to pay to use the parking lot, which they're not having to pay to use, so we shouldn't have to give them that money. Additionally, I don't know if you all saw the paper this, yesterday, where it talked about Libertyville's Main Street, and what a fabulous job Libertyville's Main Street has done over the years, and how Libertyville used to give their Main Street $50,000. But then, when times got hard, they cut them back to $5,000. And look, Libertyville's Main Street is still functioning and functioning very well. Now I understand that Mundaline Community Connection does a lot of good for the community and gets a lot of volunteers involved. But I was thinking about this. We have Mundaline Community Days that is volunteer-based. We have the Plan Commission that are all volunteers. We have the fire truck that's all volunteers. We have the police statue that's all volunteers. And I just think that we really need to consider, this year, we're postponing hiring a CSO until the fall to save us money, but we're still giving Mundaline Community Connection $30,000. $5,000 of which, I think, was to pay for the parking lot that we don't have to pay for. So, I I really can't, I just can't. I can't support this. I know I've said this every year. I believe last year I said, look, I'll give it to you this time, but don't come back again next year, and don't ask for the same amount, and here they are. I think at some point, they have to be required to really come up with more on their own. When I look at their financials, you know, they're bringing in a lot more money than perhaps we ought to look back at cutting back. They have some leftover revenue, and perhaps they should stand on their own two feet a bit more. So this year, it's a big no.
Anyone else? Trustee Kim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, this is a very big packet, but I did spend a good amount of time looking at the MCC budget. Last year, when I was sitting on the other side at the audience level, I was really confused on why Trustee Voss voted no, because they do a lot of great things in town. I don't think anyone would doubt that. I love that they have the farmer's market in Park. I appreciate Beer Festival. Really appreciate Beer Festival. But anyway. After coming on this side of the darts and seeing the numbers and everything, I realized that they're actually a private entity, has nothing to do with the village. Just like a separate thing on their own. And while they do so many great things, and I don't doubt that, I don't think anyone does. But, I mean, I said in the committee of the whole, and everyone's so lean, and we can't hire, we can't hire staff that the police need. It was really hard for me to look at this and just want to give them $30,000, because that's like a salary. In addition to the fact that the farmer's market's moving, so we don't have to pay rent for that lot. And we provide a lot of service that isn't money as well, including like Public Works and volunteers and that, and police staffing as well, so you know, you're not put in this office to make easy to them, so this year I also, you know, would have to agree. $30,000 is a bit much. I would agree, however, I mean, they have sponsorship levels, and the village wants to sponsor, that's perfectly fine. There's many other organizations as well. I just feel like giving them this amount is just like providing a salary that we need.
Anyone else? Trustee Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is, it is a good point, that besides the dollar amount that has been provided, there is a great deal of in-kind support in regard to staffing, as well as I'm sure a degree of material support. I'm just wondering how much staff time is spent, if we've ever estimated, how much Public Works, police, perhaps fire spends in support of MCC activities? I don't know. Never tracked it. It's not a small number, though. A second question, more of a concern, is when I look at the expense report, I don't see anything noted as actual salaries. And I realize there there are two or three individuals that are paid something. Call it a stipend, wage, or an hourly amount, I think it's a set dollar amount. But I'm wondering where that's accounted for in their expense report. There's a number for outside services of some $30,600. I'm just not finding a number that seems to equal what I think they are paying in compensation. Executive Director. Maybe one or two other individuals. Anybody have a, an idea, Mr. Flynn, do you have an idea where that is in their expense report?
No, I'd have to ask their executive director or their finance director.
Oh, it's Mr. Brin. How do you do?
My name is Gerald Brin, and I'm the treasurer of MCC. And, Mr. Sullivan, to answer your question, there are 1099s issued, and the number of $30,000, or whatever that number is, accounts for that. We do not have a salary per se. There's no payroll. These people are independent contractors, and we issue them 1099s.
Okay. You know, I guess that was a concern. Do they actually fit the description of an independent contractor?
Yes, they do, because one of the persons that I know of does this for other people, another person, I should say, so it's not like they're working entirely for us.
Okay. And so, are Burton's cop UC reporting is not applicable to a 1099 employee? Is our insurance, village's insurance carrier, cover those individuals?
No.
No.
And are the arms length enough that that's not...
Yeah, we, well, I don't know the answer to that exactly, but...
We have liability insurance.
You have liability.
Yes.
Yeah, whenever I think there are events going on,
Absolutely.
they provide us insurance certificates on our property. And dram shop insurance. Dram shop insurance are
There's lookers, sir.
Independent entity.
Okay, yeah, you do. Spending over $2,000 a year insurance, and that's expense. Okay. Well, in regard to the support, the monetary support, I'm opposed to supporting Mundaline Community Connection. I think they do a tremendous amount of good. The gentleman standing here is a volunteer, is our vast majority of people who function in the Mundaline Community Connection. One may have a point in regard to the savings of $6,000 that isn't paid in rent, but consider that as they get, as they make more money, as I'm sure they all plan to do.
Well, we certainly don't want to do anything at a loss. However, if we do, that serves the community. When the art fair first started, the person in charge of the art fair came to me and said, I don't know if we're going to make any money at this. I said, if we break even, that'll be a big plus, because it'll bring people into Mundaline, and we'll get our name, we'll get the town, the name out there, and that has proven to be very successful.
Okay.
Trustee Abernathy.
I am a past member of the Board of Mundaline Main Street, Mundaline Pride, but, but it was years before. I understand where Trustee Voss and Trustee Kim think they need to provide some, more of their own funding. But I think, when you look back on it, $30,000 for the intrinsic value that we get from Mundaline Community Connection, not only their support in Mundaline and the branding initiative that we're going to be launching, and how they're, we're going to hope that they will support that along with us, pretty inexpensive advertising fee for all the positive that they bring us, through Farmer's Market, through the art fairs, through the One World Festival, through the Park on Park, through the, what's the other one? Santa's Cottage, you know, I mean, these are all promotional activities that do nothing but support Mundaline. So I think $30,000, yes, you know, so we could talk about $5,000 that they don't need to pay, you know, but are we going to, in, in our million, you know, in our budget, are we going to quibble over $5,000? I think we get more than $30,000 from this organization of volunteers.
Let me just add that, in the future, if I came to you and said, "We don't want anything," to me, that would be a big plus. But we're still struggling. We still need the money. We're making strides, as indicated by the financials. We showed a $7,000 net income. And hopefully, one of these days, I'll be able to sit here and just watch the meeting. So, that would be my pleasure.
Mayor. Trustee Simple.
I've, I've been supporting this organization for 20 years now, and, see any kids in the audience? I'm a, I'm a Santa's helper, and I've spent the last 20 Decembers sitting in Santa's Cottage in a suit, ho, 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 in a suit that I, I bought myself and donated to the organization. And there are a lot of volunteers like me. And when it comes to Santa's Cottage, I've always said, "I have the easiest job here," because all the prep work that everybody else goes into, the hours spent preparing the building, and the giveaways, and the parking, and I get to come in there looking, you know, best I look all year, and have everybody loving me, which is kind of cool, too. And I get to come and go at a set time, and after I leave, there's still quite a crowd working and getting ready for the next day. There are a lot of volunteers. When I read the article in the paper yesterday about Libertyville Main Street, what I came out of it was the great partnership that the Village of Libertyville does have with the organization. And, you know, I'm sure, just like you said, you'd love to have the day where you don't need our help. And, you know, we would love to see the day where all the storefronts are, are filled with vibrant businesses, and, you know, you won't even, you'll be so busy making so much money, you won't even think to come here. But I'm not ready to put a stake in the heart of this organization, and I think if we withheld our funding, it would die. It, it would not survive at this point, so. So I, I think it's a great organization, absolutely support.
Trustee Meyer.
Yeah, thank you. I've been a strong supporter of this organization since I've been on the board and been aware of it. I was also on the board when it was increased to add the fee for the parking lot. And this year, I do have some reservations and, and some concerns about the dollar amount. Still support the organization, but I, I think $30,000 is probably higher based on, you know, I think that parking lot should be deducted, that we increase that, too.
I'm Sybil Schechter-Kali. I'm the president of Mundaline Community Connection. And you are correct, we do not have to pay $5,000 this year. But we are so excited about the new town hall in our new village, that we are going to have our farmer's market there. We have storage at the old bank, which we will not have at the village. So we will have to purchase a trailer that we are going to store, not at the village, we're going to store at the Public Works. But that is going to cost us some money that we did not count on. So that's what we're using funds for. Otherwise, I agree with you, you know, if we didn't need it, we wouldn't ask for it.
Yeah, one comment, too? When, when you have your, everything from your little breakfast meetings and public meetings, we, I've heard comments of sometimes you're serving things that are bought in other towns.
Oh, I usually bake for it.
Okay, because I've, I've heard that other grocery stores or coffee and stuff has been purchased in other communities. I would hope you'd make more cognizant effort to spend in Mundaline, and not just the Mundaline mailing address. Because we're not representatives of people with a Mundaline mailing address that don't live in Mundaline, and businesses that may have a Mundaline mailing address that are not in the Village of Mundaline. And if you have a question about is a business in Mundaline or not, you can always ask any one of us or Mr. Flynn. But I would just hope you would really do everything you can to buy everything you can from Mundaline proper.
I agree. I agree 100 percent. And, like I say, I usually bake for a lot of it. If we do buy something, we will make sure that it's done in a Mundaline store.
Okay. Trustee Kim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Fun hearing all this testimony. Why are we charging? Oh, and there was no closet available in our little hall or anything?
It's, it's for tables, it's, it's, we need a, a large room. If you want to give us a room, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, please call the roll. Simple.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Kim.
No.
Voss.
No. Thank you.
Motion carries. Okay, moving on to the last item on my report is item E. This is Exhibit Seven in your packet. This is, we need a motion to adopt a resolution withdrawing authorization for the mayor to sign letters of support to the Illinois Housing Development Authority regarding proposed redevelopment of the property at 407 East Holly Street, Mundaline, Illinois. Motion by Voss, second by Simple. Discussion? Trustee Kim.
Just wanted to know real quick, is this the same letter that we approved last week? Or is it the original two that were already sent off?
Last week.
Because this is letters in plural, so I didn't know.
Yeah, this is just what you did at the last meeting, by way of resolution, formalized.
Trustee Sullivan.
And with the withdrawal of this, this authorization, there will be no letters sent. Supporting, drawing support. No letters getting sent, other than a letter saying it meets zoning. Formally. We're not sending a, we're not sending any more letters.
Yeah, we need to just, because this was supposed to be a set of letters that went into the application that the developer was going to put in to the IHDA. And this removes the authority for me to send a letter of support. Okay? Now, separate from that, and I was going to have the, call the roll, and then discuss the 30-day window that has begun, because they went ahead and applied anyway. And that's a separate discussion that I was going to ask Mr. Marino to comment on. So, but that's pertaining to a different set of letters, I guess we could call it. This is pertaining to the letter they wanted for their application.
They, this pertains to letters of support they wanted the mayor to sign.
Correct.
Well, there are two letters, two, two indications would be sent in regard to support or non-support. Or, there's three choices. You send a letter of support, a letter saying you don't support it, or you don't send a letter at all. The choice, the third one, if we withdraw this approval, we're saying we're not going to send a letter. So, anyway.
With conditions that the mayor will bring up as part of this.
Yeah, what we're voting on now is withdrawing the authorization for me to send a letter of support on behalf of the Board. Yes, right? On behalf of the, of the. On behalf of the village.
Okay. And my, my view is that it should be supported. I would, I support it, and therefore, I would, I would vote in the negative to withdraw this, then assuming we're going to do something else, saying we don't support it.
Well.
Okay, yeah. Okay, I'm just reading between the lines.
Yeah, no, we'll, we'll address, right after this vote, then we'll address the 30-day window of commentary, okay? Any other discussion? All right, please call the roll. Voss.
Yes.
Simple.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Abernathy. Sullivan.
Nope.
Kim.
No.
I would vote yes. Okay, now, just as a part of discussion, we did receive an email from IHDA expressing that the developer had gone ahead and applied with their application for the various, you know, funding levels that they were going to do. And so it was just announcing and asking for com, for public commentary, in case I wanted to comment that, during that 30-day window. So that started about a week ago, I would say, something like that. So there's another three weeks or so left in that window, where they're taking public commentary regarding the development. So my, my inclination was to just send them things like minutes, and newspaper clippings with an intro letter saying, you know, here's the goings-on regarding this as it pertains to the village board. But.
I, 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 I agree what you're referring to here, is just transmitting the minutes from the last meeting and the original resolution, and minutes on the afternoon. And this resolution and minutes, without any positive or negative comment. Let the reader discern for himself or per se what they all mean. By understanding.
Yes. Yes.
I, I don't need to be.
Okay. Right? Village Minutes, right, okay. That's my inclination in response. Now, let me ask this, if a trustee wants to participate in the public commentary, or if I do as a private, I mean, how are we bound in terms of what we've done here regarding public commentary that they want?
Well, I think as a citizen, you just have to make it very clear when you do that in writing, that this is in your capacity, whatever capacity you're in, is in your capacity as a private citizen. So it's not taken on your reader, meaning you're speaking on your capacity as a private citizen. Or, your other capacity to show your pride and presence in that village.
Any questions, comments on that, on that information? The 30-day window? I just wanted to make sure the Board was aware that they did apply and we're in the middle of that 30-day window. Okay? All right, that concludes my report. Moving on to trustee reports, Public Works Committee, Trustee Meyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Several items today. We have been recognized with a 2013 Tree City USA recognition, and that would be Exhibit PW-1. Mr. Beauchamp, did you want to talk about that at all?
Sure, this is our first attempt at receiving this recognition. We were able to get it mostly through the efforts and hard work of Deputy Director Joe DeVito. He's here tonight to answer any questions that the Board may have, but we're, we're very excited about it. We join various other communities within Illinois in this very honorable recognition.
Thank you for that explanation. And then I have a motion to adopt a resolution approving the Village of Mundaline Adopt a Roadway program, and that would be Exhibit PW-2. And I'd like to make that motion now.
Second.
Motion by Meyer, second by Simple. Any discussion? All right, please call the roll. Meyer.
Yes.
Simple.
Yes.
Abernathy. Sullivan.
Yes.
Kim. Voss. Motion carries.
And that would be all that I have tonight. Anything that needs to be brought up?
I think so. With the season now hopefully getting a little bit warmer, we obviously ramped up our construction season as well, so we're asking everyone out there to be a little more cautious around the deconstruction zones during this, which will be a very busy construction season towards the end of the summer in the Village of Mundaline.
Thank you. That would be all I have tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Meyer. Next, Finance Committee, Trustee Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a number of motions this evening. The first is a motion to adopt the fiscal year budget, May 1st through April 30th of 2015. This budget in the amount of $54,811,016. Some thoughts on that budget? In regard to property tax revenue, this will be the third year in a row that the village will levy an identical amount of, of property tax dollars.
Second.
No more property tax collected from property taxpayers this year, in the third year in a row. There will be no service reductions. We will employ in this budget two new full-time positions, one a community service officer with the police department, another a facility maintenance worker in Public Works. We will have a balanced budget, that is, it's a little better than balanced, although not by much, in our corporate fund. Our operations, we will collect on a budgetary basis, $700 more than we will have budgeted to spend. We will have $18 million in capital improvements. Roadway improvements, it's a project out on 176, 6083. Mr. Schwan had asked us about, will be in this year's budget. We have $5 million from the state to pay for that. Not all of these dollars being spent are collected from local property taxpayers. In fact, hazard to guess, perhaps somewhere around half of them are collected locally, others from sales tax, from outside agencies. We have West Holly improvements, budgeted as capital improvements, $2.6 million in additional street improvements. There will be, in regard to employment costs, payroll, a 2 percent addition to salaries of those individuals, or the hourly amount, if they pay hourly, those individuals who are not represented by. if they paid hourly, those individuals who are not represented by a bargaining group, by union. And costs for individuals represented by a bargaining group will be very close to that percentage increase. Well, if anyone has a question, concerned, I'm sure that Director Finance, Senator LeBeto, or myself can answer those questions. Or comments?
Trustee Sullivan, just a reminder too, as we're all reading the papers, as our neighboring communities are doing the same action tonight, uh, over the last few weeks and into the next couple of weeks, passing their budgets, one thing we need to remember is, we don't have a utility tax in Mundeline. One of the only towns around that doesn't, that taxes residents and businesses. We don't have red light cameras in Mundeline, which is a revenue generator for a couple of our neighboring communities. We don't have a vehicle sticker tax like neighboring communities may have. We don't tax your pet animals. Other communities do. Mundeline used to, but we don't. And we don't have any local real estate transfer taxes. Other communities do that as well. We've been very fair, I think, to our residents in not enacting these. And just pay attention, read, read newspaper articles about neighboring communities and things they're doing to make up the shortfall. And between utility tax and red light cameras, you see quite a bit of that now. So, I think we've, staff has done a good job again this year. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you. I agree. Anyone else?
Um.
Did you make the motion?
Uh, no, no. I would, I'll put the motion on the floor to approve the, or adopt fiscal year, year ending April 30th, 2015 annual budget in the amount of $54,811,016.
Motion by Sullivan.
Second.
Second by Semple, discussion. Please call the roll.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Abernethy. Meyer.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Boss.
No.
Second motion to consider is a motion to approve bad debt write-off in the amount of $13,712.48. I'll make that motion. Like to comment on this, uh, for the most part, these are water bills that are left unpaid. Amount of $11,760.76. There's another $1,900 in some for penalties, fines that have gone unpaid. A question I have, if I might ask, the state, we have subscribed to the state program whereby we submit, we have name and a social security number for a debtor who owes, owes us money to the Department of Revenue. Should they have refunds to be sent out? They will, they will honor that debt to us, attracted from the refund.
Wake up, Rick.
That taxpayer. Are these dollar amounts submitted to that program? All right, thank you. Phil, I've made the motion.
Okay, motion by Sullivan.
Second.
Second by Semple, discussion. Please call the roll.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Abernethy. Meyer.
Yes.
Kim. Boss.
Yes.
Motion carries.
A, uh, third motion is motion to pass an ordinance establishing rates and charges for water service and sanitary sewer service in the Village of Mundeline. At an annualized water sewer rate of $7.223 effective on bills issued beginning June 1st, 2014. I'll make that motion.
Second the motion.
Motion by Sullivan, second by Semple, discussion.
Yes.
Trustee Boss.
You want to go first, Mr. Sullivan? You made the motion. You go.
Thank you. Some, some thoughts on this increase. This amounts to a little less than a 10% increase in charges for water. However, this is a commodity, and you don't pay for this unless you use it. Of course, everybody uses water. It's a matter of how much you use it. What our Director of Engineering and Public Works and our Finance Director are telling us is that we aren't collecting enough to support our water and sewer, sewer provision. It's the infrastructure that's there, thinking of, of operating that infrastructure, thinking of saving money to replace and repair that infrastructure. Those, those expenses aren't being met. And so, what we're trying to do is provide the revenue for most people using water and sewer services who agree to use them, cover those costs. We've depleted, or we're going to deplete our cash reserves in this area in, in three years. And we have $14 million in capital improvement costs anticipated in the next four years. Our rates haven't been increased for the past three years. Conservation, which is good, continues to be sought by users through actually just not using as much water, or by replacing appliances that don't use as much water. So, of course, the less we sell, the less we collect. But actually, with this rate increase, although it is a substantial one, we are still, after the rate increase, will be the second lowest community using Lake Michigan water in the Joint Action Water Agency that we subscribe to. So, I'm, uh, I hate to see any cost go up of people living in Mundeline, but I think this is one that's necessary and one that I support.
Okay, now. I feel like we're point, counterpoint tonight. Um, so, this is a 10% increase, which is a huge increase in a year. For the past few years, I've argued that perhaps we should do 2% or 3% annually so that we don't have to do exactly what we're doing. And again, 10% in one year, if you haven't raised it any other year, is hard for people, especially seniors, to budget for on a fixed income. But more concerning to me is that we are so far behind that it's 10% this year, but it is still huge increases that are planned for the next several years to get us to where we think we need to be. So, we are, have been participating in some perhaps bad budgeting. And again, I'm very concerned about what seniors and others on fixed incomes or lower income are going to do when, in a few years, our water rates have been raised 30%. So, I think that this is just a very concerning place that we find ourselves, that we haven't perhaps sufficiently explored all the other alternatives. I understand that this is an enterprise fund, and we need to bring in what goes out. But I'm concerned, again, for the seniors and the people who are going to be facing a double-digit increase.
Trustee Meyer.
Yeah, I agree. I think 10% is a significant increase on this, and I also have some concerns. This is, you know, not only, you know, we may not have a line item utility tax. We've just incorporated it into the rates. So, there's still an increase, however you want to call that, utility tax or just increasing the rate. There is an increase. So, I, I can't see supporting this item either. And in addition, our residents are going to see an increase in their electric rates this year. So, these are essential utilities that they have to have to survive. And so, we're going to, you know, one, we have control of, one, we don't, and so, I don't support this increase.
Anyone else? Trustee Kim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a couple of questions. The minimum bi-monthly bill of six units will increase from $39.23 if that's here. And the minimum, many of our seniors, I believe, are on the minimum.
Seniors, seniors have a, a reduced rate per unit, about 10%. And we just reduced the minimum bill from seven units to six units.
A year ago.
Oh, yeah, a year ago, okay. I don't think most seniors, unless they're watering their grass or doing something, I don't think household water ever reaches six units. It doesn't in the house that I live in occupied by two seniors, a dog and a cat. I, I'm quite sure that the minimum bill is one paid by seniors. Now, you could argue that you ought to pay for what you use. And it does concern me a little bit that I pay for more than I use every three or four units a month. Two or three in the winter, we, four or five in the summer. I'm paying for six. And the thought there is that you're not just paying for water, you're paying for the system that delivers water and removes the wastewater and treats it. It's just not a matter of what you use, how you're able to use water. But it is something that is talked about unfair. How about seniors paying for schools? I don't think it's unfair, but you hear that all the time. This is a user fee. This is, I think, where government needs to be paid for what it costs. If you use water and you are accurately assessing what it costs, then those costs have to be met. In my view.
So, during the lovely presentation at the committee of the whole, which was also open to the public, it was made pretty clear that these funds are drawing up graph, everything, red line, arrow, that we do have to think ahead and see what we can do to make sure we stay out of the red as a village. It seems that increase is needed either way, whether it was two or three percent per year, or whether we caught up all at once. If you know that the towns around us have a revolving percentage that increases, set out every single year, for years, we've gone without, we've kind of flat. And so, we're, we're planning ahead for the future. That being, it looks like less than $1 per 750 gallons, like 8 cents, or, I mean, yeah, 8 cents. So, I mean, this, so I understand you, you, you understand there is a need for an increase, and you would have been okay had it been revolving around here, it's just that all at once you get...
I don't want it all at once, and I don't want, again, if it was just 10% this year, but it's not. It's going to be 6% and 6% and 8% in years after because we haven't handled this well. And I think that we need to look at perhaps something else that we could do at this point, rather than a 30% increase in our water rates. And I've been saying, it's not anything new. I know it's the first time perhaps you're hearing it because this is your first year, but I've been saying it for the last couple of years.
Well, what's, what's happening, of course, is that while we are doing our best with economies to hold down the expense of the property taxpayer for real estate taxes, we are not acquiring the revenue to underwrite the losses in the water and sewer fund.
I get that.
I think if you want to take your pick, if you want, if you want to poll citizens of Mundeline and ask them what they'd like to see, revenue is needed, water and sewer operations and capital improvements. Where would you like it? Should we raise your real estate tax bill? Or should we charge you a little more for each unit of water that you use?
Well, Mr. Sullivan, maybe instead of...
Water bills are where you want to see the increase.
And maybe instead of putting it on the backs of residents, maybe we ought to start thinking about rethinking our incentive development agreements and our economic incentive agreements to businesses. And maybe we should not give them quite the breaks that we've been giving and focus a little bit more on our residents.
Well, those are subject to negotiation. I think before you say that, you got to be there for the negotiations.
Well, and, and I've been through quite a few of them, and, you know, and I understand the need for economic incentive agreements for businesses, but maybe we need to cut back a little bit on that and start focusing more on our residents who are carrying the burden of, you know, all of these other infrastructure expenses in the rates that they're being charged in a whole variety of areas.
Well, then, let's save $4.2 million and tell Walmart to take a hike. No, uh-uh. That's not the way that works because it's a sharing agreement. We're going to receive far more than we give away.
Then we would have enough to pay for the infrastructure.
These, these negotiations where we are incentivizing people to do business in Mundeline are making money. They're, they're not giving it away.
But I'm not sure the residents are really seeing the benefits of that.
That's why we're here. And you know it.
Anyone else? Okay, please call the roll.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Abernethy. Meyer.
No.
Kim.
Yes.
Boss.
No.
And mayor votes yes.
Moving right along. Mayor voted?
Yep.
Fourth and final motion, this will be much quicker. Motion to approve the payment of bills to AT&amp;T, the amount of $12,206.76. This has been withdrawn from our omnibus list of bill payments because I believe we will have an abstention, and I will make this motion.
Motion by Sullivan. Second by Kim, discussion. Please call the roll.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Boss.
Cass.
Meyer.
No, I'm sorry, abstain.
Uh, Abernethy. Semple.
Yes. Motion carries.
All right, very quickly on our, the aforementioned bill list, amounts to $1,72,560. One of the, a few of the significant amounts, we are buying an aerial lift truck that we've discussed previously from Altech Industries. This is approximately $175,000. Johnson Controls Energy Efficiency Project, paying $93,147. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, moving right along. Folks, we're about halfway there. No, I'm kidding. We're a bit more than that. Number of things to go, though. Here we go with Public Safety Committee, trustee Semple.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've got one motion this evening. It's basically a mutual aid agreement for the police department. With that, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the execution of a law enforcement mutual aid agreement and the existence and formation of the Illinois Law Enforcement Alarm System by intergovernmental cooperation seen as exhibit Public Safety dash one in your board packets this evening.
Motion by Semple.
Second.
Second by Boss, discussion.
Chief, is this as easy as it seems here?
Yes.
Yes, this is actually an existing...
Yes, this is actually an existing agreement that just hasn't been renewed for about ten years, so I least felt that it was time that we knew it, update some of the language. It's been reviewed by legal and essentially this is just affords us the opportunity for multiple law enforcement agencies to assist us in time of need.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please call the roll.
Semple.
Yes.
Voss.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Motion carries.
Chief Gunther, anything else for police while we're here?
No, sir. Not time.
Fantastic. Chief Sashko, anything for fire?
Just a couple of brief things. We had our blood drive on April nineteenth, had ninety-four units collected, so that's really exciting. That's over two hundred and seventy people in the local area that are recipients of blood, especially needed this time of year. And the old number one committee has their fundraising event next Monday night. There's posters plastered up around the building here, so just remember to patronize Wendy's that night, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all for Public Safety.
Thank you. Next, Community and Economic Development Committee, Trustee Voss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of real quick things. First of all, a reminder that Park on Park starts in May. I was at a small business expo last week, and there was someone there from Winneka's Chamber of Commerce handing out these little pins. Can everybody see it? And as we are discussing branding tonight, I thought it was appropriate to bring it, perhaps to, to think about as we discuss our branding, how we could have pins made and distributed at events to support Mundaline or shopping in Mundaline or something along those lines. That's all.
Thank you. Next, Communication and Marketing Committee, Trustee Kim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have, let's see, first one up is the utility box art program. This is basically something I brought up to Maryland a couple of months ago, where a couple of towns out in the United States and actually all over the world are taking their utility boxes and painting them over with paintings, art. And I thought this might be something great for us to try considering it's low cost and we have the utility boxes there, you know, why not? We put together a volunteer committee. And this, actually, in my quick Google search, the closest town that's doing something similar is Joliet. It would definitely be a first for Lake County. And in our strategic plan, we do have a number one priority to have art, especially in our downtown area. So I thought this would be kind of a, a win-win with our art community, the businesses and the residents who are involved in art, plus the village gets some low-cost art. I don't think there's a motion.
No, I think what we're looking for is really consensus from the board to move forward with a ordinance that would put together the committee, bring that back to the board from the twelve. Trustee Sol.
I think it's a great idea as long as somebody reviews the example of what's going to go on there before the kids do it, you know? Also.
Not necessarily kids, but...
Maybe they could make them all look like cows or something. But...
Does the village own all the utility structures? And is IDAT and all the utilities going to allow us to use?
No, not on theirs. The only ones we would be allowed to decorate would be our own. We've got a, a pretty good handful, I'm sure it'll keep us busy.
There was a map provided in the packet, and I think we're focusing somewhere in the downtown. So sites to, yet to be selected.
Yes, and to add a little bit more detail, it's just going to be a pilot program that's going to be started off with, no more than three, and we'll see where it goes from there with village, you know, feedback from residents.
Do approach the schools?
I think it would...
District groups?
Yeah, I think it would just be put out publicly like we do with any of our committees. The committee would definitely vet the artwork, so the committee would have to...
Put a credit on there?
All details to be...
Where the artists were?
First, we need to find out if, you know, we're all interested in doing anything like that.
Anyone want to weigh in?
Okay. As long as there's a control.
Trustee Meyer, you good with that?
Yes.
Okay. Trustee Semple? Okay. Trustee Voss?
I think it's great.
I think it's a very interesting idea. I think it's a great idea. We have a pilot program, and I'm curious what you'll come up with, so it's great.
We'll, staff will work with Trustee Kim and draft...
I'm looking forward to your next idea.
And draft an ordinance that provides for this committee. It's the appointment of the members on the committee or the boards.
Now, will they need to have the names to fill out the committee when we do the ordinance?
I've spoken with Trustee Kim and asked her to be thinking about, you know, who might serve in there.
Move it over there so I can be doing it.
Okay, but ideally...
Joe wasn't volunteered, by the way.
But we'll have all the names when we do the ordinance. There won't be open spots. We'll have it all together. Good.
So if there's, if there's not artists lining up, we're not going to have art by Holly and art by Joe on our boxes, are we?
I think it definitely behooves us that the members of the committee are not...
Okay.
And if people are interested in, in joining this committee, have some artistic background or an eye for the arts or appreciation of the arts, should they contact you, Mr. Mayor? Who do they contact?
Be on this committee?
Yes.
Well, I think they could, and then I'll refer them, but otherwise they could just contact...
Because are we appointing them the same way that we do everyone else?
On, we would be appointing the committee, correct? Like, like we did with the old number one committee.
Okay.
Very similar.
Great, and to be clear, it's, the committee members are not... So if they are definitely art lovers that want to paint, then they should wait to submit their artwork, not be on the committee?
Right.
Good. All right.
Go on the line. Okay, and then, let's see. So we also have in Exhibit C, C and M dash two, a motion to approve the logo that the board has agreed upon. Now, if anyone out in the audience doesn't have it in the package, but it's in the long line. So do I just read this one line?
Yes.
Okay.
And then we can have discussion.
We have a motion to approve the logo. Motion by Kim.
Second.
Second by Sullivan. And as part of the discussion, I think we have a presentation here.
Well, first, my name is Bridget Lane, and I'm with Business Districts Inc., and I really want to thank the board and the rest of the community for the work that's gone into our branding program. The logo is just part of that, but it's been about an eight-month process so far. And this really represents the identity that you're looking at, represents the culmination of community involvement, both residential and business, and also the leadership. We've had a couple of meetings. What we've had is focus groups, community meetings, we've had over two hundred people and residents participate in those meetings. We had fourteen hundred people involved in a survey that we did, which framed the image of the community, the logo being part of that. And this is a branding program, and the desire of it is to give a fresh and vibrant image to Mundaline. And our research revealed that Mundaline stands out for its strong entrepreneurship base and has a great potential to develop more new businesses. The diversity of the community is a great appeal to the millennial generation and you're already Central Lake County's most, youngest basically, community, largest community, and being fresh and vibrant is really part of the appeal to the future. It also, what we were really working very hard to do was create a logo that will work in the new age of apps and other types of uses that are different. This is a logo that is designed to differentiate the community from other Central Lake County communities. It's not designed to replace the wonderful poster that heralded basically the centennial of Mundaline. In fact, what we did is we worked together with the community to combine two concepts that they really liked, and it actually includes the star that came from the logo, and the colors are also very similar to the poster that was the centennial poster that many people like. The goal of this is to, like I said, modernize and to have a program. And many, few communities in Lake County, or it's just being adopted in many communities now, have a branding program. So what's happening here is we don't just have a logo, we have a program for utilization. And your packet shows that this will have a preferred type, but Dawn Genich, who we were very pleased to welcome after our program started, will actually become the senior brand manager for your program, and it is going to allow her to work on the identity in a very creative way by having a branding program rather than just a single image to work with. And we're very excited about this, happy to be involved with the community for this time, and really are proud of the fact that we were able to use community input along with the input of our team. And I want to introduce Carl Walt and Cindy Bodie, who work closely with me on this program. And that really is where we are at this point. We also have a launch. This is, this is basically the authorization to go forward with the recommendations on the complete launch. So I know you have a packet with all the information. We're here to answer questions tonight, but like I said, what you have now combines and use the community input to come up with something different than the consultants originally proposed, but we're very pleased with results and think that the collaboration between the community and the consulting team has been very effective.
Trustee Semple.
Got a question for you. I know we asked this in the committee meeting a couple of weeks ago. You mentioned community input and community calibration. How many members of the community were involved in this whole process to get us to this, this logo that we're looking at right now? I mean, it wasn't just a couple of elected officials and staff members, was it?
No. Like I said, the first step was to come up with what are we trying to convey with the logo, and that involved a survey that fourteen hundred people responded to. We had over two hundred people involved in a community meeting and interviews. And then once we had a concept, we had eight focus groups. One of them was an absolutely marvelous focus group that we really enjoyed with the Latino community that had over forty people at that one. The other ones had a good eight to ten at each one, so we had well over a hundred people after we were looking at concepts. There also was a newspaper article that sent out to the community, a basic concept after we met with you at the last meeting. So there's been a lot of opportunity for community input.
Thank you. Trustee Voss.
I had some concerns expressed by a resident today asking about our budget for using this brand and how we would redo all our logos and police cars or public works cars or uniforms. And so I thought perhaps, Trustee Kim, is this, do you want to answer that?
Sure. I actually received the same email and kind of searched through the entire budget packet while I was at my full-time job. I couldn't find the exact number, so I was trying to ask Levato for the exact figures, but I do know that in the fiscal year 2015, we did budget to launch the branding campaign. However, it's been like bite-sized pieces. It's not on the first year that we're taking over the water tower, so it definitely isn't a launch. Do you know the exact amount?
Yeah.
I actually know what page it's on.
You're right, it's, there's some money in different areas of the budget. I know, for example, just in administration, there's about seventy-five thousand dollars just in administration for various things because you have banners, there's money budgeted in public works for some sign changes, banners, various things.
Yeah, most of our changes would be phased in and would have been accommodated within our current confines of our budget because, for example, vehicle signage would be replaced. As the new vehicles come in, we don't put the existing logo on them, we are waiting until the, the branding campaign is finalized, and then we will put the, the new logos on those new vehicles, and we will then purchase exist, or purchase new decals for stock as well. So those are already incorporated within the confines of our budget, so there's really not an increase because of the change in the branding. Same with clothing. There's a certain finite amount each year for clothing purchases within our budget, so that really doesn't change at all in terms of the branding campaign.
In the draft email that I had written back to that resident, I said that it's hard to pin a specific amount on how much money it will cost because several of it will have to be presented. So I, all, all I know specifically is that we are budgeting a certain amount, and each department has their money as well.
I did respond to her as well, that it would be phased in as things needed to be replaced, that it's not that we're going to go out and rebrand everything at once.
Yeah, this first year was a little bit of a challenge because as BDI was finishing up the whole branding initiative, we were constructing our budget. And so, so we didn't have a real good chance to align that. I know, I think BDI's recommendation was a little bit more than that the first year, but, you know, we're in the ballpark with the money that we have in there, and, and once the report gets done, then, you know, I mean, this is just the beginning. The branding goes on, you know, quite frankly, forever, and it'll evolve, and we'll keep moving forward and taking bites of this as we can afford it moving forward. We'll work them into future budgets.
If I could just add one more comment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are those in the community who look at the logo and say, well, we paid that money for that logo, and I would just like to clarify that they're, from the, the branding campaign from start to finish, what people need to consider is the fact that we've had these focus groups, we've had, you know, BDI sent many hours with us, making sure that this is what the residents wanted, getting feedback, reaching out to the Latino community, and that was really important, too, because they're like thirty-three percent of our population, and their voice matters. So all that taken into consideration, plus the tweaks, plus, you know, all the feedback involved from many different parts of the community, and the strategy as well, because that's involved. And then even afterwards, there's a follow-up. You guys are coming back. So all of that's part of the branding campaign, and it's not just, hey, we paid money for this logo. Because buying a logo is completely different than doing a branding campaign. So I would just like to clarify that. A lot of hard work. We appreciate that.
I guess my thoughts are, I really like the logo, but we have to be careful that we, like you said, Trustee Kim, I totally agree that we're cogusson of the brand, and I think it just is a reflection of who we are. I think we really are the rising star of Lake County. We really are a place where, no matter what socio-demographic background you come from, you can move to Mundaline and start a business here and really shine here, and the logo reflects that. So, you know, I appreciate the good work, the hard work that's gone into this.
So we have a motion and a second, right?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, please call the roll.
Kim.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Voss.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Abernathy. Meyer.
Yes.
Motion carries. Done?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Okay. That takes us to, now, let me make sure we got this right. Transportation Infrastructure Committee, Trustee Abernathy is not present right now. Trustee Sullivan, I think you're the vice chair. You want to take that over? Okay? Okay. That takes us to other reports. That takes us to other reports. And what we'll do is, I'll ask for a motion and a second, and then we'll turn it over to Mr. Lebedo to present. But I need a motion to adopt a resolution approving the term sheet for economic development agreement between the Village of Mundaline and Oak Creek Plaza Limited Exhibit OTR-1.
Make that motion.
Okay.
Motion by Sullivan, second by Kim. Mr. Lebedo, would you?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have the, not the petitioner, but the other side of the agreement in the audience. Mr. Norton is here representing the owners, and the owners are also here if there's questions that the board may have. I think they're prepared to answer those questions. This agreement is really, it's the term sheet that we have is really the making of an agreement that we anticipate bringing back to the board on May 12th if the village board is, concurs with the term, the conditions in the term sheet. And this is an economic incentive agreement with Oak Creek Plaza, which is for the relocation of the creek in the Oak Creek Plaza shopping area for the construction of a approximately 28,000 square foot commercial building in the future. The property is, would be approximately three acres. This agreement provides for, this term sheet, I should say, provides for the sharing of sales tax that is not only generated from the new building that is anticipated to be constructed, but also the other buildings in the Oak Creek Plaza Shopping Center except for the Walmart Shopping Center. The total value of the incentive agreement is up to $750,000, or 70% of the cost of the relocation of the creek. The sharing of the sales tax will be a 50-50 share. So 50% of the sales tax that's generated in that shopping center would then be shared with the developer for the actual cost of relocating the creek. There is also a number of conditions that are placed in the term sheet for this to be effective. Those are identified in paragraph 12. Largely, they're conditioned on the construction of a Walmart facility. And I would just point out a Scrubner's error in paragraph 12. It identifies it as 180,000 square feet, but the resolution provides it to be 178,000 square feet. So the 180 would be changed to 178. But there are a number of things that are conditioned, aside from the construction of a Super Walmart. There are timelines laid out in this agreement for performance and, you know, the construction of when the building will take place, so on and so forth. So it's pretty straightforward. That essentially summarizes what the agreement is and that we would be bringing this back to the board on May 12th if the board approves the term sheets tonight. So with that, if there's any questions that you have, I can try and answer those, or the petitioner, or the developers here as well.
Trustee Meyer, okay?
Yeah, what I didn't see in the resolution, and I think it needs to include, is that the agreements or the term sheet agreements are not transferable to any other agent, so that they would only apply to the petitioners right now and not be transferred to someone else at a later date. I think that needs to be included in the resolution. The other thing that the drawing and the pictures that we have show the roadway from Route 45 into that shopping center plaza, and I don't want, because it's included in the picture here, any implication that the village is supporting that or putting any monies towards that. And I think that needs to be clarified, you know, one of two things. Either that roadway deleted from the picture that's part of this agreement, or language stating that that roadway is not part of the economic incentive agreements.
Trustee Sullivan?
Thank you. We're not exactly describing, or not describing at all, the store, which, this, this sales tax, we, we generate, be generated from. I guess we're talking about stores that are there now. Most of them are going to be demolished, there for the Walmart store. But we're talking about the Hobby Lobby store. We are not talking about the car wash, the bank, and the Peaden?
Yeah, just to clarify that.
Looking at, we're not describing just exactly what's going on.
Yeah, to clarify that, the, it would be all of the stores in the Oak Creek Plaza Shopping Center that generate sales tax. And that would include the Outlets.
All the Outlets.
And the former Hobby Lobby building.
Okay. Should we say that? I mean, what it says, source of the revenues generated from the retained parcels, that is new stores to be built, Security National, Hobby Lobby, and all other stores at Oak Creek Plaza.
Other than Walmart.
And the Road Inn.
Right.
Not Walmart, it says that.
Right, right.
And there's no consideration for the East West Road. We are going to accept this new drainage base. The village will own that?
Yes, the village would accept the donation, and the perpetual maintenance would be on OCP.
Okay. Why do we want to own that?
I think there is a benefit to the developer for the donation.
Oh, okay. Oh, all right, all right. In regard to a transferability of this, I think that would, you know, to say that it's non-transferable, perhaps be a deal breaker. Maybe not. Nevertheless, I think that it should be transferable, but the village should retain the right to accept a new owner. Not, and that, that agreement to accept a new owner, not unreasonably withheld. Might ask the attorney who is here representing the owner whether or not non-transferability would be acceptable. I have no idea. That's, that might be a problem. This for 20 years.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the village board. My name is Matt Norton. I'm a partner at Holland and Knight, and I represent Oak Creek Plaza on this economic incentive agreement. In terms of, of the assignability, we would, we would not want to have the agreement be non-assignable. You know, we're, we're very early in the development stages here. It, it might be that Oak Creek Plaza, as it's currently constructed, develops this property. There might be other regional or national developers that are interested in this, developing this property. And we would want to have the ability to assign the benefits to some other entity or partner or buyer. I do think it's fair to have as a limit on that, that the village would not unreasonably withhold its approval. Would have the right to approve an assany, but would not unreasonably withhold its approval of that assany, you know, provided they are, have sufficient capital and resources and so forth to complete the job.
Thank you.
And we would be happy to include that in the, I better ask him first. We'd be happy to include that in the incentive agreement when we prepare it.
The good thing about this is that there are a number of areas where the agreement is contingent on owner proceeding with his, you know, to sell the property to Walmart. Also to do the things that he says he's going to do within two years from the time Walmart opens.
That's correct. There are a number of timeframes that the property owner will have to satisfy.
Yes, trustee Meyer.
Yeah, I have a couple other additional things. I mean, I have seen quite a few different projects that have come through in my tenure related to this property, and I've been in full support of all of them. On this particular one, I have, you know, several concerns, especially as it relates to moving the creek. There is developable, developable property on Route 45 by this owner that could be developed right now without moving the creek. And I find that to be far more, I'd be far more willing on an incentive agreement towards developing that property, which can be done without moving that creek right now. When it comes to moving the creek, there really is no purpose to benefit the residents to move that creek or to put any dollars towards moving that creek, other than benefiting the owner of the development. And so I can't see putting the money that could go to our residents, could go to other projects that we have, into moving a creek that doesn't need to be moved. So I'm not in support of this agreement.
No?
Trustee Boss?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I echo trustee Meyer's concerns. I have talked to people who deal with Diamond Lake and its runoff and asked if there was any benefit to this, and they've confirmed my suspicion that there was absolutely no benefit to moving the creek. I think that some of my fellow board members are gambling, betting, if you will, that this property owner is not going to move the creek. He's had a desire to move the creek before. In fact, had had money before and still never managed to move it. And so they're betting that we can say yes now because it still won't get moved. I, on the other hand, am not a gambler. Additionally, I'm very concerned about the precedent that this sets. While I will commend staff because originally this property owner was asking us for $2 million, and they have gotten him down to a number that is more palatable, perhaps. It still is a matter of setting a bad precedent. We are incentivizing a property owner with money, revenue that we are currently getting that has nothing to do with actually the property that will be incentivized, which is a bad precedent. And even more so, we're incentivizing a property owner who reached an agreement to sell his land and then reconsidered. And so we're sending a message to every property owner in Mundaline that they can reconsider their deal, and if it's worth it to us, they'll come back to us, and we'll incentivize them for behaving poorly. And I, I find that incredibly objectionable. And trustee Sullivan said before, well, perhaps we need to sit at the negotiating table, and then we would understand it better. Well, trustee Meyer and I have sat at this negotiating table, and I think we understand it better than anybody else in the room, and we're the ones who aren't supporting it. So after sitting through hours of negotiating with this property owner, I am not comfortable giving this incentive because I feel like this village has been held hostage. He reached a deal to bring in a great retailer, and I think that we are all pleased that Walmart is coming to the village. But I am not pleased at all with the process of how this has come to pass. I think that this board is setting up future boards with a really bad precedent by doing this.
Mr. Mayor, it, it would also be another story if there was a business ready to develop in the property that we're talking about on the incentive agreement. If there was somebody at, and that's another one of the issues.
Well, let me address the notion of it being a bad precedent. You know, we have, as a village, incentivized the moving of a lot of dirt to create retail centers in Target, for example. And it's extraordinary costs that are incentivized to, to deal with. And this is one of those examples of extraordinary costs to move the creek, to make room for this commercial building. And so it's not, this, we're not breaking new ground here in, in that sense. So the precedent was set previously with another major development, which required the moving of a lot of dirt and land.
You're right. We have, we do. We incentivize and we take into account extraordinary expenses. However, the extraordinary expense that's being incurred here is to move a creek that, as trustee Meyer already presented, doesn't need to be moved. But furthermore, the only reason that we're incentivizing the creek, that you're considering incentivizing the moving of the creek, is because they are withholding their approvals for Walmart. If Walmart wasn't in this deal, we wouldn't be talking about this. So the bad precedent that I'm talking about is linking these two together. It's allowing this property owner to hold the village and its residents hostage.
Oh, that's ridiculous. I, yeah, excuse me. You know, you're going to take the rhetoric to that level. I, you know, it's, it's business, it's negotiations, and you're going to start using that kind of language? It's not appropriate. It's, it's, it benefits us to have a degree of certainty moving forward that this project at Oak Creek Plaza can move forward with the Walmart deal. It, it benefits us, rather than to say no and then just see what happens. I, I think this is a very positive thing that'll move, it'll, it'll bring a degree of certainty. It'll, it'll, it'll present, you know, the owner with a degree of certainty so that he can move forward with his bottom line. It brings cer, you know, it helps bring a greater degree of certainty to us, what's going to happen down there. It moves things along. And I can only find good things in doing that, especially when it's not, we're not breaking new ground here in terms of incentivizing extraordinary costs.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Maybe I can make everyone feel a little better since I've been around a while. There was a time when the owner of Oak Creek Plaza, who was here tonight, had money set aside to really do much the same of what he wants to do now. He wants to move the creek, and he wants to provide for more buildable commercial space. And his goals in that regard didn't take place in a timely fashion, and at that point, the village withdrew that funding from him. Not sure, Mr. Moreno can maybe remind us of the, somewhat the exact amount. I, I think it was far more than 750,000.
A million three.
How much was it?
I believe it was a million three.
A million three. Almost double what we are looking at here. Now, the rebate isn't just money to fly out the window. It's money to perform a specific task, to move this, this creek in order to establish up to 20,000 square feet of space that we hope will be retail sex, tax generating. This is something, rebate without interest to Walmart, spent, is around $25 a square foot of space that they will create. This, being far smaller, the dollar amount's smaller, yet per square foot is somewhat more. It's around $37 a square foot. But in order to get this done, and I've heard both sides of this story, I think I've got some concerns about the approach the owner has taken. Nevertheless, he has some good arguments in regard to why he's taken that approach. What's most important... What's most important to all of us is that we get this property redeveloped. And I think working together in regard to this agreement and working with Walmart in regard to the agreement that's in place now, can't go until this land is transferred. I think this is in everyone's best interest. And I think we've got to put away a little bit of our concern, realize it could have been 1.3 million a few years ago. Dollars probably closer to 3 million in today's figures, and provide the sales tax incentive and get this job done.
Except Trustee Sullivan, Trustee Boss and I sat in the room with one of the owners who explicitly told us they would do nothing to jeopardize the Walmart deal, and yet they have. So it's as simple as that.
And so are we to cut off our nose to spite our face?
No, we're not, but you have to have a good business arrangement and agreement. This is not a good business agreement for a whole variety of reasons. I have no ill will against the owners of this property. I've supported every project that they've brought to the table. I would support development of the land they currently own that they can develop on Route 45, which gets far more traffic than the property that they're talking about. You can develop there without having to move a creek that does not need to be moved except for business profit.
Actually, there's one more thing. Trustee Sullivan, you just talked about how we are incentivizing them slightly more than Walmart. However, there's nothing in this agreement that requires them to rent this new space only to retail users. So you're assuming that we'll be getting retail sales tax from this property, which isn't necessarily true because in discussion, you yourself told me that you thought it was way more likely that they would rent it to a dentist or some other user and therefore would not generate retail sales tax. And again, you yourself told me that this particular project could not exist based on their own sales tax, which is generally the way we do things, because they couldn't generate that much tax. And furthermore, there's no way that on a per-square-foot basis they are going to generate anywhere near to the dollars that Walmart is generating. So if you're going to compare how much they're being incentivized at a slightly higher rate, let's talk about how much that they're going to give to the village at a much reduced rate. Really, you're not comparing this appropriately. But again, the bigger picture is that you are giving in to a bully and putting all future negotiations at risk.
No, I think you're absolutely right about the sales tax generated. I mean, you're going to have hairdressers, nail salons, service industries. But think about what you're going to do in energizing that whole intersection, north, south, east, and west. You've got a dying shopping center across the street. You've got one not doing so good to the west of that one. Think of what that amount of traffic and what that commercial enterprise.
In the short time we've been discussing the incentive agreement, we've seen multiple different plans. Some of them have been a strip mall, some of them have been restaurants. There is no definite plan of how that property is going to be developed. There's no concept plan, no idea. We've seen multiple different ideas in the short time we've talked about it. Why not develop the property on Route 45, which has significantly more traffic, and leave the creek alone? At that point, after they've developed Route 45, then they can come back to the board and talk about that other property and what they want to do with it.
I just see this as being essential to, in the most timely way, get all of these projects off the ground. And to not do that, and I guess I grabbed that, this example of cutting your nose off to spite your face, but really, that's not a bad example. You don't support this and allow these projects to move.
It's not a good business deal. It has nothing to do with personalities or cutting off noses to spite face or anything else. It has to do with what is a good business deal for the residents of the Village of Mundaline. And having sat through the negotiations, I think that we have a far better handle on those types of, you know, what went on and what, how we came to here than probably you do.
How long would it take for that good deal to come forward?
Well, you're assuming, Trustee Sullivan, you have fallen exactly into where the property owner wanted you to be. They have successfully linked two projects that should not be linked. They have a purchase and sales agreement for the one property and decided that that wasn't enough of a benefit to them remarkably, and so they have managed to link up another property for their further benefit. And you've fallen for it. I, I think that, you know, Trustee Meyer and I have made, you know, tried to keep the board up to date on all the different things. And for the longest time, even you, Trustee Sullivan, said you would not give these property owners another dime. So somewhere along the way, you've changed their, your mind on what you are willing to incentivize them and the benefits that you see. So, so be it.
That, that additional dime was from Walmart sales tax.
It's two separate deals.
On their part, no.
They're two separate deals that are at the 11th hour being linked together.
And I think that's what we need to have done to get these projects off the ground. And the question I ask is, if not now, when? And at what cost? Millions of dollars. You will make the $750,000 sales tax rebate look like chump change when you consider the effect on the entire intersection of commercial space.
I don't think that we're arguing at all that Walmart won't be a huge boon to this community. I don't think anybody in this room would argue that. It's the precedent that you're setting, linking these two projects together, allowing an uncooperative landowner who gets a good deal and then decides to sweeten it at our residents' expense, basically. So I think that it's a bad precedent for negotiation. And the question is, how much will that bad precedent cost the village on the years to come? And we have no idea.
I told you that there's a bad taste in my mouth in regard to the process of this negotiation, but I see both sides of the question. And I'm, and I see the goal. The goal is to get these projects going.
And I see both sides, Trustee Sullivan, you know, and I think that they're doing what they have to do, trying their very best to get a good business deal and agreement. And I don't fault them for doing that. However, we're elected to represent the village and the residents of Mundaline, and this is not a good agreement.
Me with you. We're both have the same representation in mind. We just agree on how to do it. I think we ought to vote.
Okey-dokey.
Should we hear from, if you'd like, Trustee, go ahead.
First, I understand the bullying analogy, the updates. It really wasn't fair at some point where they're just being held hostage at gunpoint. You propose that the incentive agreement be pulled from other stores within the shopping plaza. I thought that was a creative way to do it. It incentivizes them to put people in the other places and yet keeps the Walmart next to them. From the very beginning, you had approached several times about creeks because I have questions and natives and everything, water flow, because I'm going to be promoting some water in the rest of the town. And there have been people who specifically told me, don't move the creek. And, you know, what do you, what do you say to that? Because people are down to me, they don't agree with me. And the answer was that they would have to work with the Army Corps of Engineers. They'd have to get the permits and do everything exactly correctly the way it needs to be and replant, even there's a detention basin, and everything has to be right or else this incentive that we, we're giving them is a driver. And they have a time limit to do that. You've got the permits, construction, everything needs to be done. If not, and first of all, I would like things to be done correctly. But then, secondly, I like the fact that there's some time tied to it because it won't just be floating out in trade forever. You know, I mean, if you kind of, if we tied time with all the other developments too and, you know, speed things up a bit. But if I could go on a little tangent here, way back when it came to the PJ Maxx property, you know, I was talking about, well, this is like a business thing. Why, why should we concede, you know, so they can get some sort of tax credit, et cetera, et cetera? And I was given kind of a, well, you know, as a village trustee, you kind of have to think about, would our residents want an empty store there? And an empty store at the Dominics, and an empty store by Menards? Because you didn't want that. You know, honestly, the guy who left already, you know, going in the Dominics. They have these questions all the time. And probably the last thing I'd want for our residents is to yet have another empty barren shopping center. You know, in the end, like, I see both sides, I really do. And it was so hard for me because at first I was definitely with you guys. But I see this as kind of like, you know, that, that point of the divorce where both parties don't want to give in, and then it's got to go to mediation. And nobody's happy. And I heard that no one's happy that that's not a good negotiation. Layers agree. But so, you know, no one's really happy with this, but it seems that we did our due diligence to make sure to do these things. And if they don't, well, that's it, you don't get the money. I mean, so conditions are put in place, and so I still have scrudin' what we did, what we could.
But it's not really as you're portraying it. You know, it's not people at a standoff unwilling to give in. We're talking about, you know, if they want to move the creek to develop that land, great. They should pay for it, the residents should not. That's the difference of opinion there. You know, if they want to develop the land on Route 45 and ask for an incentive agreement on that, that's a different story. Come to the table and we can work on that. What we're really talking about is the residents paying for moving the creek. And I don't feel, and there are many residents that don't feel that they should be paying to move that creek. If the owners want to move that creek and pay for it, that's fine. If the owners want to develop, you know, the other property on Route 45 and ask for an incentive agreement, then come to the table, and I'm sure that that's workable. The residents should not have to pay for moving a creek to develop property that is only developable by moving that creek. You know, the other factor in there is they owned a large property, a large piece of property, and it was their choice which property to keep and which property to sell. Why should the residents pay because they kept, you know, the piece of property that can't be developed? So why should we pay for that? It was their choice of what property that they sold and what portions and parcels of it that they sold. You know, so there are a lot of factors that, you know, we can't sit here and go through every single factor that went on in the negotiations and that went on through the talks with those owners because we'd be here all night. So I mean, yeah, you guys have gotten bits and pieces of it in the highlights, but there are a lot more information that you're not taking into consideration that probably Trustee Boss and I, you know, have more information on, that have gone into an informed decision that's not, you know, as emotionally charged as everybody wants to make it seem like it is.
Lastly, if I could just remind everyone, the property owner reached a sales price, signed a contract, an agreement, to sell their property to Walmart. They reached that without coming to us, without requiring an incentive on our part in the beginning. And in fact, it was somewhere a year or two after that that they came to us and explained, really, basically, that they were holding up that until we could come up with this. And I think it's, perhaps, had they come to us in the beginning, there would have been a different feeling about the negotiations. But because for the first year of negotiations, they were quite insistent that they needed no incentive from the village and that they would not hold this up, that when they did exactly what they promised they weren't going to do, it started to be a problem. So they've lost some credibility with the negotiating team. I'd say they've lost their entire amount of credibility with the negotiating team.
Before I forget, I can ask Mr. Norton a question. In Part Five of the term sheet, sentence in regard to maximum reimbursement to Oak Creek Plaza is a lower amount of $750,000 or 70% of actual cost of the work? Is that actual cost, the certified cost? Is there a reason we didn't use the certified cost of the work?
Well, I assume we'll use whatever process the village normally uses in incentive agreements to make sure that the costs are accurate and spent for the, for the purpose.
It just doesn't give us a number and say, okay.
Right. Now, we'll, yeah.
We have, actually, we have a form of economic settlement that Mr. Martin can supply to them that we've used with Target and PJ Maxx.
Okay. Okay, we've beat this horse hard enough, I think we should.
We haven't beat it, not yet. You're not yet.
Okay, all right.
You know, Trustee Sullivan, you and I were on the board when we approved a Walmart on the west side of town. We lost it. We lost Walmart once already. How long do we think, how patient are they going to be if we say no to this tonight? Anybody willing to bet how long they're going to be patient with the Village of Mundaline on their second request to build a Walmart in our town? I, you know, I'll use another cliche, throwing the baby out with the bathwater. I'm not willing to do that and willing to risk. Pete, has Walmart applied for any building permits yet? Let's get this all out in the open. Walmart's not a done deal yet, is it? Correct, Mr. Mayor? What are the chances if we vote no tonight that we're going to say no to Walmart too? Pretty strong. All right, I'll vote yes. I say call the question. Let's get the vote over with.
All right. Please call the roll.
Sullivan. Kim. Boss.
No.
Meyer.
No.
Abernathy. Simple.
Yes.
Mayor?
Vote yes.
Okay.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thanks to you.
Thank you.
Just as a, just want to express appreciation to all the parties on both sides, staff, negotiating team on your side, the attorneys. It's been many months. It's been of intense negotiations and discussions and just my, please accept my appreciation to everyone involved in bringing this thing to this point. So, thank you, everybody, you know. You know, good job, I'm glad we got this.
Mr. Mayor, I'm glad, we appreciate it. Agreement, whatever the agreement is, we'll go forward with it. We hope to work, well, work well with it. Once we've decided, that's fine, it's fine.
Okay. Very good. That takes us to omnibus vote items.
Wait a minute, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, wait a minute, yes.
Other reports, can I ask you a question? Don't we have a spring cleanup coming?
Going on, starts tomorrow.
Right now, right? Garbage days starting this week and next week?
Two weeks.
Right, yes. Another thing that we do that's unique that no other towns do?
Okay, just, you blew that past us here. So when you can set out, let's just define it for everyone watching. Okay, we can set out large items. Which week this?
This week.
This week?
And next week.
And next week.
The next two weeks, okay?
Starting tonight.
Now, besides that, our agreement does allow for one large item per pickup, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Spring cleanups is a little more than just one item.
Okay. Now, what about bag, let's just, what about bagged landscaping, leaves and stuff? stuff? Does that count in spring cleanup?
No.
Okay.
Well, you can put it out, but it'll be collected as part of landscape waste collection.
Okay. Okay. Any other reports? Or, any other reports? Okay. All right, moving on to omnibus vote items. We have items A, B, C. Indeed, does any trustee wish to pull any of those four items?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull exhibit B.
B?
B is in-
B is in Bravo. Okay?
B? You said B like Bravo?
B is in Bravo. Yep. Anyone else?
Yes. D, please.
B is in Delta. Trustee Voss? Anyone else?
D.
So I need a motion to pass items A and C in the omnibus vote items.
Make that motion?
Motion by Kim. Second by Sullivan. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Kim.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Voss.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Abernathy. And Sempel.
Yes.
Motion carries. Trustee Kim, item B is in Bravo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This omnibus vote agenda item describes a $3,312,4,900 industrial revenue bond. Those terms aren't sitting around, but there's specific terms in which we need to use it. Is this something we could use for the CD? Or what are the conditions of using them?
These are federally reserved tax amounts that it can only be used for industrial expansion. And I, there are some eligible affordable housing projects. The developer has to come forward and request that our funds be allocated to that project. And if no one comes forward, what we've done the past two or three years is to allocate those funds to the, the revolving loan or the fund that's operated by Lake County Partners, the clearinghouse they call it. So if a project comes up, they'll have funding for it. These funds are good for, I believe, five years and then they're, once they're reserved and, or allocated to a project, they're good for five years and then they are lost.
So, I'm sorry, how long have we had these funds and do they just remain there?
Every year we get an allotment-
Okay.
-from the state. They establish a per capita dollar value. And as a home rule community, we get a specific amount of funds allocated to us that we can put towards a project. If we do put it toward a project, we can charge a service fee, if you will.
So it can be used for manufacturing? And it could be used to incentivize companies to come to Mundaline, to go to our commercial area?
It, it, if, sure, I guess you could look at it that way. If someone requested it, we could use it for that purpose. But we need a project, someone to request it, and it needs to fall into the eligible requirements for that funding. We've done that in the past. In recent years, we haven't had any companies want to use these, these funds. In part, I think that's because interest rates are very low and the cost of doing a industrial revenue bond have a lot of legal requirements that add to the cost. So the projects have to be fairly large in order to warrant the use of industrial revenue bonds.
So do we call Boeing and ask them to move over here and have them all fund?
Perhaps. We do make that available, I know, when Mr. Barrera meets with, you know, businesses that are looking to locate here. I mean, it's one of the many things that we talk about in terms of incentives. And I, I can't remember the last time. I know that Park Butterfield, looked at those. I don't remember if they actually used them.
No, they did. We did, they did take, didn't they? They did take them. I believe.
It's been a long-
Well, Charlie maybe, I don't want to dispute with Charlie. But we have used them-
Further, Charlie.
We've used them-
I don't remember precisely.
Oh. I think we alloc, it's like the, what we've done in recent years, they haven't been used for industrial projects for a number of years. We've allocated them towards affordable housing projects, not in Mundaline, but outside of Mundaline. And for a number of years, we got a fairly high percentage, 2%, on what we allocated to the project. Those projects gather funding from a lot of different communities. So our $3 million is a small amount. It may be a $20 million plus project. So they alloc, they gather industrial revenue bond cap from a variety of communities. And we've given those, our cap, to projects like that. In recent years, it hasn't been used for industrial projects.
Are there any veterans out there watching? You know where to go. Mundaline. Thank you.
You want to make the motion, please?
I want to make the motion.
All right.
For exhibit B, your motion to- About the resolution authorizing the reservation of the 2014 volume cap of the Village of Mundaline, Illinois for an unspecified project.
Motion by Kim. Second by Sullivan. Please call the roll.
Yes.
Sorry. Kim.
Yes.
Sullivan. Voss.
Yes.
Sempel.
Yes.
Abernathy. And Meyer.
Yes.
Motion carries. Takes us to trustee Voss, item D.
I just pulled it off because I was unable to check the bill pay list and I went to abstain from voting.
Okay. Okay. Can someone else make the motion then for item D?
Second.
Motion by Sempel. Second by Sullivan. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Sempel.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Abernathy. Kim and Voss.
Abstain.
Motion carries. That takes us to village staff reports. Village administrator, Mr. Libado.
Well, the first item on here, we, I think I indicated in our, my report, or Mr. Flynn did, that this was simply there in the event that we saw a favorable move in the electric rates that would hit that magic sweet spot of 7.9 that the village board established. And as of today, it has not hit that mark. And so our recommendation is that it be a motion to not take action on this tonight and that we wait until our next meeting, which is May 12. We got some good news that ComEd is going, coming out with their rates by, I think it's May 7 is the date. So by May 12, we'll know what Commonwealth Edison's rates will be and we'll be able to benchmark that up against what the other market rates are. So, so there's really no action. This was put on there just as precaution. So if somebody wanted to make that motion to remove it from the agenda.
I'll make the motion. Motion by Sullivan. Second by Meyer. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Abernathy. Sempel.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Voss.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And then the second item is an item that I had sent out to the board previously. And this is authorizing, it's a motion authorized the mayor and the village clerk to sign the Mundaline police officers collective bargaining agreement. I had sent out the tentative agreement prior to, well, last week. And then I got word over the weekend, there was a vote taken by the police officers and they have authorized their representative to sign the contract as well. So if there is questions that the board has or wants to talk about specifics in the contract, the board certainly has the freedom to go into executive session and discuss that matter. If not, then it's simple motion that's on the agenda.
Any thoughts? Would someone like to make the motion?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Motion by Sempel.
Second.
Second by Meyer. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
These cost of living adjustments, this is a three-year contract, and they are somewhat higher than the 2% that made up potentially agreed to pay our non-represented employees. And parts of the overall purchase rate that are above and beyond what our other employees are receiving. And at the same time, it costs us a substantial amount of money to negotiate these contracts. And it costs our employees in the police department a substantial amount of money every year to pay their union. We just have on today's, on tonight's, the total is $14,000 for a month's wages. That's just not getting most of that. It's in representing us in this contract negotiation.
I'm sorry, I didn't turn my sound up. But what I really want to say is that we are paying represented employees substantially more than we are paying non-represented employees. And of course, that only goes in one direction. Pretty soon, everybody will belong to a union. Village and its taxpayers will pay more, not just in salaries, but in administering contracts. And our employees will pay more. And the union president, I'm sure, makes more than anybody in this room by two, by a factor of two. And units of government that supply police and fire services and water and sewer and street maintenance can't go out of business like Dominics. We can't be choked to death and decide we can't afford to be in business any longer. And somehow, and it won't happen in Illinois first, but it's happening in other states, the right for public employees to organize and to strangle the taxpayers is being revoked. And I'm not going to vote for this contract. Sooner or later, we have to, we have to revolt against this. Public employees should not have the right to organize a labor union. There may be some type of less formal arrangement in regard to employment conditions, but they shouldn't be under the strict guidelines and a totally unlevel playing field that exists in the state of Illinois. And this is the last contract, labor contract for public employees that I will approve unless playing field is leveled. And unless the costs to everybody are recognized. I'm sorry. That's all I have to say.
I'm sorry, just to clarify, you said this is the last contract you'll approve and you also said you were voting no. So which one is it?
I vote no. Anyone else? Okay. Look, please, or Mr. Flynn, please call the roll.
Sempel.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Abernathy. Sullivan.
Nope.
Kim.
Yes.
Voss.
No.
I vote yes.
Mayor.
I have no other report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Takes us to the report from village attorney, Mr. Marino.
I have no report and I don't believe there's any second session.
Okay, thank you. Village clerk isn't here. Anything for Mr. Flynn?
Nothing.
Okay. That brings us to the conclusion of this evening's village board meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Voss. Second by Kim. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, thank you very much.